Hello and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council Regular Meeting of Tuesday, April 30th, 2019. My name is Louise Chris and with us today is Robin Schmidlin, our Sign Language interpreter. The following is a list of legislation to be introduced by Pittsburgh City Council. Councilman Reverend Ricky V. Burgess presents Bill 1620. Resolution authorizing pursuant to Chapter 210, Acceptance of Gifts to City of the City Code, the Mayor and the Office of Special Events, Department of Public Safety and the Office of Special Programs, Department of Parks and Recreation, to accept an in-kind donation of various holiday decor and supplies from the Highwoods Properties, owners of PPG Place valued at $8,000 for the purpose of the transition of the annual Light Up Night Gingerbread House Display to the City-County Building in 2019. Councilman Corey O'Connor presents Bill 1621. Resolution authorizing the Mayor, the Office of Management and Budget and the Department of Public Works to enter into a professional service agreement with Oxford Development Company to serve as property manager for 412 Boulevard of the Allies. Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith presents Bill 1622. Resolution providing that the City of Pittsburgh enter into professional services agreements and/or contracts with service providers for professional services in connection with the 2019 City Cut's Lawn Care Program and providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $300,000. Bill 1623. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding from the Pennsylvania Development -- from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's Keystone Communities Grant Program to renovate the Jefferson Recreation Center and the adjacent park and further providing for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $402,000 for this stated purpose. The grant requires a match from the City of Pittsburgh in the amount of $402,000 for this stated purpose for a total project cost of $804,000. Bill 1624. Resolution granting onto DAH partners, their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a handicap ramp with handrail and landing at 6620 Hamilton Avenue in the 12th Ward in the 9th Council District. Councilman Bruce A. Kraus presents Bill 1625. Resolution appointing James Hill to serve as a member of the Historic Review Commission for a term to expire March 31st, 2021. This concludes the reading for today, Tuesday, April 30th, 2019. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of Pittsburgh City Council for today, Tuesday, April 30th, 2019. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross, Mrs. Harris, Mr. Lavelle, Mr. O'Connor, Mrs. Kell Smith, Mr. Kraus President, six members present.
Thank you very much. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? And we ask that you would please remain standing then for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the high states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. You may be seated. Our First Order of Business is Proclamations. May I have those here from the Holocaust Center to come up, please? Councilman O'Connor has this proclamation this morning, but he's a little under the weather, and so I'm gonna pinch it, is that it? For Councilman O'Connor on the proc this morning. Whereas, established in 1981, the Holocaust Center of Pittsburgh was created as a living memorial to honor survivors who came to Pittsburgh to rebuild their lives and to local soldiers who helped to liberate the camps. Established through a generous gift of Leonard Rudolph, who believed in the power of giving to transform people's lives, the Holocaust Center inspires engagement with Holocaust history and connects it to the injustices of today. And whereas the Holocaust was the systemic, state-sponsored persecution and murder of 6 million Jews and other targeted groups by the Nazi regime and its collaborators. To counteract the lasting effects of that era, the Holocaust Center of Pittsburgh works to end antisemitism, racism, and prejudice by building relationships across communities, providing educational public programming for all ages, and building a comprehensive resource center that would help people learn about the Holocaust and the counter-intolerance in all of its forms. And whereas the Holocaust Center offers many educational resources to the community, like a gallery space with temporary and permanent exhibits, the Hutzpah Comic Book Series, the Bar and Bat Mitzvah Twinning Program, teacher training, school field trips, community competitions for educators and in the arts and writing, publications, internships, volunteer opportunities, and reference services for the collection of 3,000 books. And whereas this year, the Holocaust Center of Pittsburgh will sponsor a Week of Remembrance as a time for our city to remember the 6 million Jews who were murdered by the Nazis in World War II, as well as other victim groups, while also getting a chance to remember and honor survivors, World War II veterans, and righteous Gentiles. The week will be marked by the Waldman International Arts and Writing Ceremony, the -- I'm sorry, forgive me.
Yom B'shulah.
Thank you very much. Commemoration focusing on women and the Holocaust and a performance of the play The Soap Myth featuring the legendary actor Ed Asner. Wow. Now therefore, be it resolved that this council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and commend the Holocaust Center of Pittsburgh for its never-ending commitment to remembering the victims of the Holocaust while honoring their memories and honoring heroes and rescuers both past and present. And be it even further resolved that this council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare May 1 through May 7, 2019 to be Holocaust Center of Pittsburgh Week of Remembrance here in the City of Pittsburgh. May I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second, all favor.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you very much. Please come up and say a few words.
Thank you all. I would like to introduce who's here with us today. I'm Lauren Behrens' father. I'm the Director of the Holocaust Center. We have two of our board members, Debbie Kaplan-Levinson on the end, and our Board Chair, Dr. Roy, we call him Jake Jacobson, and in the middle, Tanya Bielski-Brom. Thank you to Council President Kraus, that was really lovely, and also to Councilman O'Connor, who I believe is on the phone but isn't here, and to all of you for supporting this resolution. You just heard a lot about what the Holocaust Center does. Now more than ever, our work is crucial. As we've seen in the past six months, two attacks on synagogues in our own country, antisemitism did not begin and end with the Holocaust, so teaching about it is really important because it gives us a chance to reflect on antisemitism that persists and the other hate crimes we have seen around the world and in our own country. One thing that we have seen, all of us in Pittsburgh have seen, is how strong this city is, how much we are here for each other, that we really are stronger together, that we are stronger than hate, and this proclamation makes that so clear, says loudly where we stand as a city and as a region. So this is a wonderful moment for me, for all of us from the Holocaust Center, and for our city. Thank you very, very much.
May we have all members for photograph, please? Thank you, Lynette, thanks. Okay, may we have Councilwoman Kell Smith next, please? I guess you have some pretty special guests with you this morning? Do you have the Elliott team here, right?
Will the Elliott team please come forward?
Come over here, guys, and girls.
And you can stand up here as well.
However you want them. They can stand on the steps. Women to the top.
Come over here, guys.
Sorry, hang up on you.
Usually we go out to dinner together. Futsel, we were all trying to get her.
Yeah, you're all welcome to come up and join.
So I just wanna say, I've known Alex for a long time, but prior to knowing Alex, I knew his mother, Jane Folds, who organized the volunteers for Pittsburgh Public Schools. I see Dronene Harris, Councilwoman Harris, shaking her head. Yes, and she was a mentor of mine who got me involved in the community and volunteerism and involved in Pittsburgh Public Schools, where later my career took off and some other things happened, but I really owe a lot to her. And now her son has continued in his -- in her footsteps, doing amazing things for the community. There was not a team here for the kids in Futsel? Futsel? And I just wanna say, he create -- he worked together with us to get this team, he worked with Pittsburgh Public Schools to provide space for the kids, and now they have this amazing team and a great program on the west side of the City of Pittsburgh with some really great kids. So Julian, and his mother and I sometimes go out to dinner, so I don't know if he realizes it's me. I just wanna make sure I mention him. So I just wanna thank you for your work with the kids and all the coaches for stepping up to the plate, because it really takes a lot of time to coach kids and to be patient with them and do some amazing things, so I wanna thank you for it. Whereas, Futsel is a fast -- and if I say it wrong, correct me when you get up here -- is a fast-paced indoor soccer sport played with five players to a team and emphasizes skill development by using quick reflexes, swift thinking, and accurate passing, a game I definitely could not play. The game is often played by professional soccer players to refine and maintain their skills for the outdoor game. And whereas, the Elliott West End Athletic Association formed a club which includes high school team, which includes a high school team, middle school team, and grade school team, who work closely together learning cooperation and sportsmanship. And whereas, the Elliott West End Athletic Association teams play in the annual city sports tournaments among 29 teams. I can't even believe there's 29 teams. And four divisions run by city sports. Elliott West End Athletic Association is one of only two organizations to enter teams in three out of the four divisions. And whereas, the Elliott West End Athletic Association grade school and middle school teams, both coached by Alexander Folds and by the help of assistant coach James Musa and Lucas Capruso. Luke, I didn't realize that was you. My husband coached Luke when he was young. I didn't realize, sorry honey, you got older. And I stayed the same age. Won their respective championship titles in city sports tournament held in March 2019. And now therefore be it resolved that the council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby congratulate the Elliott West End Athletic Association's grade school and middle school Futsel teams and be it further resolved that the council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, April 30th, 2019 to be Elliott West End Athletic Association Futsel Club Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
All favor.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Congratulations.
Now when Alex comes up, he can correct all my mistakes when he gets up here, but we're also gonna give you the mic to let the kids and your coaches introduce theirselves as well, and then the coaches, and starting with Alex, can say whatever you'd like to say. But you wanna pass the mic around to introduce your kids first?
Thank you, we'll start with the elementary team.
Do you wanna --
Say your name.
Here, stand up here when you say your name, so people can see you.
My name is Julius.
What's your last name?
Brown.
Say it again.
Julius Brown.
Julius.
Julius Brown.
His mother also volunteers in the community.
My name is Joseph Preston IV.
You're as tall as I am.
My name is Isa Sakala.
My name is Abdul Shama.
Look at these great shirts they have.
My name's Philip Mendoza.
There we go.
My name's Julian Pope.
All right, that's everyone from the elementary team.
You wanna do the next one?
My name is Juan Coria Nunes.
My name's Coolsteiner.
My name's Michelle Defied.
My name is Justin Wilson.
My name is Maxwell Cotrell.
My name is Musa.
What's your last name?
My name is Dante Drury.
Drury, you're taller than I am.
My name is Charles Foltz.
And I just wanna say, there's probably about 20,000 Drurys in Sheridan. But I'm happy to say I also know most of your families.
I'm Coach Musa James Sakala.
I'm Coach Lucas Capruso.
Luke's father worked for the City of Pittsburgh, too. Let's see.
Can you introduce yourself?
My name is Alex Folds.
Would you say something?
Yes, I would like to first thank Councilwoman Smith, council in general, I would like to thank Pittsburgh Public Schools for providing our facility space, I would like to thank City Parks for all the amazing things that they do, I'd like to thank everybody involved, our coaches, our parents, our whole community for helping making this happen.
And you for your tenacity.
Well, you know, it's my pleasure. I personally do think that things like this can help save children's lives, you know, help them teach good halibuts, good character, good personal development. I think a lot of those things are really hard to learn outside of sport, and I would like to thank everybody for everything they do. Thank you.
Did you take a picture? Do you wanna say a few words? Wanna say a few words? Come on. And I just wanna thank Alex and all the coaches and the parents for being -- for putting so much time in and for your dedication, and amazing players for making Elliott proud. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Do you guys wanna move together? We're gonna get a picture of everybody.
Do the parents wanna come in?
The little ones in front, you need to get in.
It's a tiny ones in front. Do the parents wanna get in?
Either way, we'll be good. We'll get a good photograph.
Is that okay?
No, screw that, come on, screw that.
Cheese. Harris, you wanna come in? Do you guys wanna come in, by the way? One more with Councilwoman Harris, 'cause she knows very well Alex Folds. Want a photo? You never get another one like this, you might not. Okay, just making sure.
Okay, thanks everybody, congratulations. Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Smith. Will we have Councilwoman Harris next, please?
Could everyone with Needs Day please come forward? This is a great organization that does so much good for so many children that are not privileged to be able to go to college. And this program has gone on and on, and their minds falling out now. For how many years is it now? 56 years. I knew it was quite a lot, because actually, they helped my daughter 42 years ago, well, not 42 years ago, but let's see, maybe about 20-some years ago. Yes. And this proclamation reads, whereas in 1963, two women named Mary Ann Jordan and Florence Eisenstein called a meeting of their friends and peers in the wake of the civil leader Megan Everett's death to see how they could help a group of African-Americans who were accepted into college but could not afford to go. And whereas, from that meeting grew an organization called NEED, which has provided grants, scholarships, mentoring, internship, and more to the region youth minority groups. And whereas, for the past 13 years, NEED has taken 100 Aspern students to history black colleges. They have exposed over 1,500 students to HBCU through the transformational tours. These tours have resulted in over 600 students attending, graduating from HBCU, where they led the nation in numerous professions. And whereas, NEED provides many programs to assist students and families in college process. And whereas, they hold a STEM program that survives to increase the number of African-American females in science, technology, engineering, and math fields. And whereas, they provide ACE programs and help students learn about career options and help them explore, apply to second education, secondary education. Additionally, NEED helps parents navigate the complexity of financial aid applications and also FAFSA. And whereas, AAMI is a program that is held to mentor young males in both a one-on-one and a group setting. This program helps these males to make positive life choices, resulting in hundreds of African-American men going to college. And whereas, kids, Collating Kids is a program that is designed to improve academic excellence and achievement in math among children residing in Braddock, PA. And whereas, NEED also supports a program in which they fill a room that supplies dormitory needs for other freshman students so that they may enter college ready to tackle and enjoy their new academic experience. And whereas, the scholarships help empower Pittsburgh's next generation of leaders to overcome financial, class, cultural, and social barriers. In recent years, NEED has focused on the help talent, talent students in need of financial assistance that otherwise would not receive aid from college programs with increasing tuitions. And whereas, needs, resources play an important role in encouraging access through financial and consulting assistance to those students in the most need. The average need recipient has an unmet need of $6,777.95 yearly. NEED averages 1,000 scholarships and grants to children or students. And whereas, NEED is celebrating their 56th year and their annual NEED dinner. In addition to the $36 million given in scholarships over 56 years, NEED has had position African-American Pittsburghers to realize the dream of college experience to over 34,000 students that unprayed contribute, contributes, has changed the profile of the region, ultimately the nation. And now therefore be it resolved that the council of the City of Pittsburgh done, hereby has done, hereby has dedicated Thursday, May 2nd, to be NEED Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thank you so much, congratulations.
I just have to say that I had this much to go on to start this proclamation, and we've got so much more, thanks to the staff in my office, who is also part of the NEED.
She would like to say a few words.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Marcia Sturdivan, and I'm the president and CEO of NEED. I'd first like to thank City Council and particularly Councilwoman Harris for recognizing our efforts. We've been going on for fifty-six years, and we're not tired yet. Our students and our children in this community still need us, and we'll stand with them and stand for them in their dreams of pursuing a college education. Today, I have with me our colleagues who help us do our work, and certainly without them, NEED wouldn't exist. We'd like to recognize our vice chair of the board who volunteers her time, the Honorable Rena Watson. She's our boss. And also, we have Mrs. Rhonda Brooks, Mrs. Andrea Murphy, Ms. Cheryl Biggs, and Mr. Charles Robinson. And while these employees are paid, they volunteer many, many hours to help our students. And we want everyone to know that we'll be celebrating May the 2nd, fifty of the area's brightest and best students in our annual dinner. You're all invited to come. We would love to see you there. And we are so proud that May the 2nd is NEED Day. We were just excited about that, and thank you again, Councilman, Councilwoman. Why do I keep saying that? Harris, she's been a supporter of ours, and we're very proud and appreciative of that. Thank you.
Good morning. God bless you. It is such a pleasure to be, to serve on the Board of NEED. The pleasure and the honor. Today, I take care of my dad. I don't really have to take care of him because while he's ninety-six, he doesn't require a lot of caring for. But what I say every day is that it is such a blessing to care for someone who took care of you your whole life. Well, that's NEED. NEED gave me a scholarship when I needed it, and I was a college-bound young person. And also, if I recall correctly from last year, Reverend Burgess and Councilwoman Lavelle also raised their hands and said that they were recipients of NEED scholarships. NEED has given scholarships to thousands and thousands of young, mostly African-American students. And what they have done, we've run the statistics, and we always talk about bridging the gap. We always talk about education and the importance of those things and the strength. Education is one of the strengths in our community, and when I say our community, I don't just mean the African-American community. I mean the entire Pittsburgh community, really the entire world. And so getting an education is one of the things that helps us to be stronger, to move forward. And no one in this city does that better than NEED in terms of helping young African-Americans get to school and get through school. And our statistics show that NEED recipients have a, if you look at income levels, because that's one of the things, how we measure if you're doing well and measure success. It's not the only. But NEED persons, the students who have been with NEED, show a higher level of income than the average African-American. That says something. And so, we need to continue to work with NEED, continue to help assist NEED. I want everyone to know that it has been primarily funded by foundations over the years. Well, foundations aren't giving the same monies that they've given. And everyone that works with a 501(c)(3) or any type of grant-receiving organization knows that. So NEED has to find ways to get the money and to keep doing what they're doing. So my plea to each one of you is to give. And you can go online, you can give any amount, ten dollars, twenty-five dollars, hundreds, hundreds of thousands, whatever your ability is. But anything helps to continue NEED to do what they've been doing. And they're a blessing to us, and it certainly is a blessing to me. Thank you. God bless you.
I would like to say thank you to the City of Pittsburgh, and thank you, City Council President and City members, for allowing us this opportunity to recognize NEED and what it has truly done for the City of Pittsburgh, not only for students, but also for families that are recipients of the NEED Award. I have been a part of this organization for going on almost five months, and just in my short amount of time, I have noticed that the awards, not only it gives students hope, but it gives them the perception that their lives can be different than where they see their circumstances at. And not many families are given the opportunity to even afford to pay to college, let alone send their daughter or their son to college. And this organization will help bridge the gap between disparities between families now and families that will come. Thank you.
We have all the council come up because they have children from all over. Excuse me? I didn't hear you. It's off.
Rena's Garland's boss, too.
Yeah, I just want to say that I guess I didn't use the name, but Rena Watson does work in my office. And the scholarship was given because my daughter got a scholarship from the Black Educators, and then it just followed with NEED.
Okay, and now I have another great proclamation here. It's under terrible circumstances that we have this, but we have stranger awareness for children now. So would all those that have been part of stranger awareness for years now, please come forward. And I don't see the hat man here today. No, the hat man. Yeah, Mark Fatla's not here today. You can move over. And then you can walk up one of the steps, too. Just make sure everybody can see you. Okay. Whereas during the month of May, Allegheny General Hospital was auxiliary, and the Allegheny General Hospital Northside Leadership Partnership co-sponsored stranger awareness programs. And whereas, the disappearance and murder of an East Allegheny resident, Scott Drake, was the catalyst for stranger awareness programs on Pittsburgh's north side. And whereas, in its eighteenth year, students in Pittsburgh, Martin Luther King Pre-K-8 will receive two days of instruction, May 5th and May 25th, from Beshear High School, Perry High School, and Carrick High School students, focusing on the importance of stranger awareness. And whereas, on Friday, May 3rd, my anniversary, 2019, the program will conclude with a performance to the students by Josh and Gab, a nationally-known children's music duo. And whereas, the following individuals and organizations have offered support and partnered with this year's stranger awareness. The Allegheny Auxiliary Board, Susan Libard, President. Mark Fatla, Esquire, Executive Director of the Northside Leadership Conference, Lauren D. Dominik. She is the Allegheny General Hospital Northside Partnership Coordinator, Northside Leadership Conference. Ashley McFalls, Start on Success Transition Facilitator for the Pittsburgh Public Schools. Michelle Perella, Principal Pittsburgh, Martin Luther King Pre-K-28. Jacqueline Mazelot, K-4 School Counselor, Martin Luther King School Pre-K-8. I was just over there yesterday reading to the children. Let's see, who else do I have? Brad Ward, Start on Success Transition Instructor, Perry High School. Kristy Prudensowski, Start on Success Transition Instructor, Carrick High School. Alan Crawford, Start on Success Transition Instructor, Beshear High School, Perry High School students, Carrick High School students, and Beshear High School students. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and honor Allegheny General Hospital, its auxiliary organization, the Northside Leadership Conference, and our students, teachers, for their commitment to educate local youth and make their lives safer through stranger awareness programs. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare the month of May, 2019, we got an error on this, I'm going to have to have you go back to my staff, they have eighteen on here, to Stranger Awareness Month in the City of Pittsburgh.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
All in favor? My motion passes. Thank you for your work.
Okay, I would, before we get started, I know we have some of our council members that have Beshear and also Carrick, if you guys want to come up, too, which I believe is all three of you have a part.
I'm president of the Allegheny General Hospital Auxiliary, and we are most pleased to be able to support this program on a yearly basis. It's just been eighteen years, and Debbie and I were just talking about that. It's just unbelievable it's gone on that long. And Debbie Kaplan, who was a member of our auxiliary, her son was instrumental in beginning this program eighteen years ago, so I know she's very proud of that, and we're proud that she's a member of the auxiliary. So thank you so much for this honor. Thank you.
Hey, Deb, come on up. You have to say a few words. She retired, but she really didn't retire. She just volunteers.
That's right, yes. Well, I just want to thank you so much, Councilwoman Harris and President Kraus, and all the members of the City Council for your support. You know, I just want to say I was a hospital administrator at AGH, very proud of all my years there, twenty-five-plus years there, and particularly this work that we work with the Northside community and the other surrounding communities to have our students really engaged in trying to support reducing, you know, the, really educating youth. And as we always say, if we can save one life through this program, we'll have made a difference. So thank you for giving me the opportunity, and I'm just so happy to see that this program continues to sustain itself for all these years.
Just on behalf of the Pittsburgh Public Schools, I just, I'm sorry, my name's Ashley McFalls. I'm a counselor with Pittsburgh Public Schools, and I work with the high school students who are part of this program. So I want to, of course, thank City Council and Councilwoman Harris for this opportunity to talk here today and just share what a great experience it is for our high school students to be able to get in front of the young students and teach them and learn and be leaders, and just the skills they gain from that, in addition to helping the students, the little ones, you know, be safe. It's such an amazing experience. So thank you to the AGH Auxiliary, thank you to Northside Leadership Conference, and again, thank you for having us today.
I just want to thank you for all your work and for doing so much with our students. And I would love to see a day that the students actually spent a day here with City Council members, and maybe they can inspire us, because I'm sure Rena could inspire them, but I think maybe they would help us a little bit.
Okay, and everybody else is too shy to come up, but I would like the other council members to have gross to please come up and share in a picture. Mr. Kraus?
Okay, Madam Clerk, we have one proclamation to be read into the record from Councilwoman Kell Smith, please.
Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby congratulate the Westwood Women's Club on the occasion of their one-hundredth anniversary and thank them for their civic service. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Wednesday, May 1st, 2019, to be Westwood Women's Club Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. May I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
All in favor? My motion passes. That concludes the proclamation portion of the council meeting and will take us into public comment. Anyone wishing to speak before City Council, of course, has three minutes in which to do so. I would like to remind everyone here that the rules of council are clear. They state that comment is limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are, or may at another time come before the council. We do not permit profanity, and we will maintain order at all times. We ask that you would please begin by giving your name and the neighborhood in which you reside for our public record. The green light will indicate the start of your three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you'll have one minute to summarize. When the red light comes on, your time's expired. Good morning, welcome.
Good morning. Danny Sennowalt, Bon Air. I'd just like to find out who decides what laws we enforce. We have a Pittsburgh Parking Authority that goes crazy in South Side, Oakland, Shady Side, North Side, and places like that. You get a ticket for not putting a quarter in a meter. But other places, you can park, and you can block the sidewalk, you can park the wrong way, you can park in your front yard, you can leave a junk car in your front yard. This is on Bosman Street, coming up Bosman. The whole street from Grimes down to the stop sign at the bottom, the one side is all cars parked on the sidewalks. Now, I've seen women with their strollers have to go out and walk down the street with their babies in a stroller. I've seen kids pushing their I've seen kids pushing their bike, have to get out in the street and push your bike. Now, before somebody gets run over here, let's take care of this, all right? Somebody gets run over, and you go, oh, we should have done something. But something's got to be done there. There's cars parked in front yards, there's one truck that's been parked there for months with jacked up on a jack with the front wheel off. I mean, this is an eyesore to communities. I can see parking on a curb, but when you block the whole sidewalk so nobody can use it, that is not right. And motorcycles. Is there not a state law that says that motor vehicles should be mufflered? Why do we have to put up with these motorcycles coming down? My property in Bon Air, the backyard is at the wooded area down to 51. I can hear motorcycles coming from Crane Avenue all the way past the Liberty Tunnels, up all the way out 51, out past Frankenshores, and sometimes to 88. What is the purpose of that? Why is it not enforced? Do you need decimal meters? I will front you the money for them, all right, if the city can't afford them. Something's got to be done with this. It's getting worse every year. And then there's garbage and overgrown property on the 300 Block of Moore Avenue and the Marlin Street between Knox and Suncrest Street. There's parts of that in the summer, it's like driving through a cave. So many people's backyard are grown over there, there's trash parked, thrown all over the side of the road. I mean, this is stuff that decays neighborhoods. Why can't we enforce these laws? You're writing a law about firearms that's never going to go anywhere because you can't enforce it. So, why don't we do something about the ones that we have enforced? Thank you.
Good morning, Dr. Miller.
Dr. Ronaldin Miller, Pittsburgh City, Homewood, New York City, Harlem. I love Gordon Parks. See his self-silhouetted "Off on My Own," Harlem, 1948, with Ralph Ellison. "Make the Invisible Visible." He was a class act. Global Intelligence Society Candidate for President of the United States 2020. I fuse the paradigm-informed intelligences of twenty-one primary disciplines to solve city, USA, and world problems with the child as a focus. A concern of Pittsburgh Council is elections, the vote-recording verifiability problem. The national polity of the United States and the local Pittsburgh polity is defined by citizen voters. We are gold, bronze, black, copper, white, green, orange, lavender, and not just blue and red. The Democratic Political Party, DP, is infinitely divisible, and the Republican Political Party, RP, is definitely divisive. And they're not entitled to assume that they define our political culture. Mr. Kraus, District Three, views himself as a leader of the local Democratic Party. Mr. Kraus publicly shows no interest in an encoded encrypted voter receipt verifying for whom a voter voted. The US current system cannot prove a link between any vote and voter. If the USA has a soul, it is the vote, our secular sacred heart. I have advanced the idea of a vote voter encoded verification process, the VVEV, copyright RLM, since 2013, 2016, presenting citizen briefs to the US Supreme Court and Pennsylvania Supreme Court, the only individual in the United States that I know of to do so. Not vicious, flying Dumbo Trump, not vapid donkey Biden, both brain-defective sexist. These are not paradigms of intelligence or information. They are crass acts. The primary core issue of the 2020 presidential election is not Trump, but vote voter encoded verification, VVEV. The core is of the election is we, the people. I do not follow any of this. I refuse to accept this distinction between DP and RP as definitive of our political culture, and there are millions of us who are like me on this point. I follow Gordon Parks, photographer, novelist, shaftmaker, musician, poet, who said Harlem is everywhere. Make everything you touch better.
Okay, thanks, Dr. Miller. May we have our next speaker, please? Okay, may we? Thank you. Good morning, Ms. Brown.
Oh, he's giving me the red carpet. My name is Yofon F. Brown, and he's giving me the red carpet, and he said, I do want you to see this, and it's for the teenagers. It's for Anton's young friends. See, you know, I look at it like this. I'm seventy-two. I'm up in age. I hurt when I see how our black people and poor people are being killed, but I can't hurt like these young people who he was friends with. You just really don't know. I know how I feel as a mother when I lost my son, but these are young people that have to live and remember Anton. I'm telling you, when I saw him shot down, I screamed, "It's assassination." Okay, so now, I have to bring up, see, I have problems, I'm changing the subject, because I have problems with our black, B-L-A-C-K, politicians. I have problems with our black politicians when they come into the high-rise, and only certain people that they talk to are certain people like Thanksgiving. Wheatley brought fifty turkeys. Who got the fifty turkeys? Them old people was mad as H-E-L-L, because they said, "That turkey, stuffed turkey, then brought the turkeys, and he then took them back out." That's on Friday. Thursday was fifty turkeys. There's a hundred and ninety of us in the building. Who got the hundred? Do you understand what they do? It's underhanded. You got some that she used to get for her whole family. But I'm saying this because I want you to see this. Attention, please be advised that the Ervis Tire residents will be presented with their new grill, they give them a new grill. We can't get to the hospital because we don't have a bus. We got to go, it's two buses to get to the hospital, but they're going to bring them grill so they can cook that pork and die, then they can't get to the hospital. But anyway, it was Wheatley and his Dwight Watson. Okay, this is the ode to John. No, he's mean. He's a mean sucker. So, anyway, his wife said, and I met her, and I said, "He's mean," and told her how nasty. She said, "Come on in." So, I'm talking to John, and here comes, I don't know, a big victim. But anyway, he hollers, and he scared all of us. It's that by councilman across the street. He, I saw him the last time, and I told him, "You didn't do nice," it's three years. So, he started, he was hollering at me. He said, "I told you," I mean, he said, "And I don't appreciate you." You know he was hollering at me, because I wasn't supposed to tell the president on him, and I didn't. I didn't tell him, but then I did. I said, "Because he's not being a..." He wouldn't even take the petitions to even make it a bill for them to turn it down. He lives across the street. He knows that we have a hard time getting to the hospital.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Yes, thank you, too.
Thank you. Okay. All right, may we have our next speaker then, please? Okay, good morning, Mr. Jackson.
How you doing? My name is H.P. Jackson, Howard Philip Jackson, Hazelwood Bound, the center of life I'm connected with. Mostly people see me with black political empowerment, B-PeP. And I want to go ahead and mention and talk about, like, do Pittsburgh know about greatness and what they already have and what's been going on for over forty years, all right? For a man to put time in Pittsburgh, right? And I think they should go ahead and name an award after him, all right? You know, the Humanity Award, at least for a week. Matter of fact, he'll be seventy-four May the fourth. I'll be sixty-six May the third, but that's that James Brown thing, because I've been recognized as Soul Brother Number One. But to get my point, all right, to be an activist in Pittsburgh, I want the world to understand about greatness and what we already have here, okay? I'm grateful our Mr. Tim Stevens, the model, okay, the model, to treat others not as they deserve to be treated, but with love and respect. And we need that, right? By doing so, he has given us the gift of compassion. I want you to understand what I'm talking about, being in the trenches. See, we've been programmed in the past about raising hell and having voices to explode, but like, to have the gift of compassion means treating others with gentleness and respect, even when America doesn't deserve it, all right? Understand what I'm talking about, history and culture in America. All right, here we are again. Compassion means treating others with gentleness and respect, even when America doesn't deserve it. My mentor, Mr. Stevens, taught me about, in Pittsburgh, it's the practice of being patient, tolerant, and helpful to others, especially those in need. Great men like Mr. Stevens are willing to be kind to others because they have an accurate view of humanity. I think the man deserves the Humanity Award in Pittsburgh, all right? You know, today was awards day, all right? And just understand what, how my mentor has taught me, and he supported me like twice on my deathbed, and I just had to get rid of this here leg here, right? And I'm telling you, he touched my life to go ahead and live again, and he's done touched so many of your lives also, all right? And like, I want you to think about it, okay? And understand humanity, and there should be a award named after him, and I'm proud to be B-Pepper. Also, I named him the Big Pepper, because that's black political empowerment, because he's been a great humanitarian. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Jackson. Thank you. Okay, seeing no further speakers, we will close the public comment portion of the council meeting. We'll go into presentation of papers. Our first committee of the morning is our Committee on Finance and Law. Our Chair is Councilman Burgess. May I please have Councilman Coghill for Councilman Burgess?
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill number 1620, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to Chapter 210 of the City Code, and the Mayor, and the Office of Special Events, Department of Public Safety, and the Office of Special Programs, Department of Parks and Recreation to Accept an In-Kind Donation of Various Holiday Decor and Supplies from Highwoods Properties Valued at $8,000 for the Purpose of the Transition of Annual Light-Up Night Gingerbread House Display to the City-County Building in 2019.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman Coghill, our Chair of Urban Recreation.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Gross, our Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Harris, our Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Mr. Kraus.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Lavelle, our Chair of Public Safety Services. Councilwoman Kell Smith.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilman O'Connor, our Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs. May I have Councilwoman Kell Smith for Councilman O'Connor? Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill number 1621, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Office of Management and Budget and the Department of Public Works to Enter Into a Professional Service Agreement with Oxford Development Company to Serve as Property Manager for 412 Boulevard of the Allies.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Kell Smith, our Chair of Public Work Services.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Kell Smith presents Bill number 1622, Resolution Providing That the City Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement and/or Contracts with Service Providers for Professional Services in Connection with the 2019 City Cuts Lawn Care Program and Providing for Payment of the Costs Thereof Not to Exceed $300,000. Bill number 1623, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Execute Relevant Agreements to Receive Grant Fundings from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's Keystone Communities Grant Program to Renovate the Jefferson Recreation Center and the Adjacent Park for Further Providing for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $402,000 for this Stated Purpose. The Grant Requires a Match from the City in the Amount of $402,000 for this Stated Purpose for a Total Project Cost of $804,000. Bill number 1624, Resolution Granting unto D8H Partners LP, Their Successors, and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Costs and Expense a Handicap Ramp with Handrail and Landing at 6620 Hamilton Avenue in the 12th Ward, 9th Council District.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Kell Smith?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to waive the rules of council, Rule number eight, for Bill 1622, so it could be added to the agenda for tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. May I have a second, please?
Second.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Can I just add, this is the grass-cutting program, so it's timely, because grass grows quickly.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, opposed abstentions. Councilwoman, the Bill 1622 will be on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. Next committee is our Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management. Councilwoman Strasburger is our Chair. Councilwoman Kell Smith for Councilwoman Strasburger.
No new papers, Mr. President.
You're working overtime today, Councilwoman, you are. Thank you. The Chair does have one new paper. It's the appointment of James Hill to our Historic Review Commission.
Council President Kraus presents Bill number 1625, Resolution Appointing James Hill to Serve as a Member of the Historic Review Commission for a Term to Expire March 31st, 2021.
May I have a motion to approve?
Some of.
May I have a second?
Motion to interview.
Okay, there's a motion to approve, and there's a motion to interview.
Second.
On which motion?
The motion to interview.
Will you withdraw your motion to approve? So, we have a motion and a second to interview.
Take a vote?
We're going to take a vote.
Oh, good.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstentions? I'm opposed. Thank you. We'll now move on to unfinished business. There is no unfinished business before the council, so we'll move into Reports of Committee for Final Action. Our first committee of the morning is our Committee on Finance and Law. Our Chair is Councilman Burgess. Councilman Coghill for Councilman Burgess.
Point of order.
Yes, Councilwoman?
Yes, that means that there's only four votes, so this doesn't pass at all, so it won't be.
I have my right to oppose, Councilwoman.
No, I mean, you opposed, so...
I did.
That means he's not on the Historic Review.
No, ma'am, it does not. The motion is to interview.
Right. Right, we didn't vote on his appointment.
We voted on a motion to interview, Councilwoman.
I just want to say, a point of order is that they don't put him on the Historic Review Commission.
Okay, we can go back and forth, Councilwoman.
Just so...
The motion, the motion was to interview, Councilwoman.
Exactly.
Okay.
And I just want to say, for the record, that doesn't put him on the Historic Review Commission.
Councilwoman, do you want to do this for the next twenty minutes? How do you want to do this?
Whatever.
Okay. All right, so we are on Reports of Committee for Final Action, and we have Councilman Burgess, our Committee on Finance and Law.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill number 1614, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for April 24th, 2019, with an Affirmative Recommendation, Bill number 1589, Resolution Further Amending and Supplementing Resolution Number 855 by Transferring $5,000 to the Brighton Heights Athletic Association. Bill number 1590, Resolution Further Amending Resolution 549 by Transferring $5,000 to the Brighton Heights Athletic Association.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title under our bills, under the Committee of Finance and Law. Is there further discussion on any of the bills? Okay, seeing none, bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor? Ms. Lavelle?
I have Councilman O'Connor on the phone.
Oh, okay. Mrs. Kail Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President?
Aye.
Aye, six, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills then, having received the legally required number of votes, are finally passed. Our next committee of the morning is our Committee on Public Safety Services. Our Chairperson is Councilman R. Daniel Lavelle. May I have Councilwoman Kail Smith for Councilman Lavelle?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1615, Report of the Committee on Public Safety Services for April 24, 2019, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 1582, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Enter into a Grant Agreement with the Office of the State Fire Commissioner to Receive a FY 2019 Fire Company and Emergency Medical Service Grant in the Amount of $13,569 and Further Providing for an Agreement or Agreements to Rescue Training Equipment for the Bureau of Fire.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills under our Public Safety Services Committee. Do we have further discussion on any of the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mrs. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President?
Aye.
Aye, six, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills, having received the legally required number of votes, then are finally passed. Next, we have our Committee on Public Work Services. Our Chair is Councilwoman Teresa Kail Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Kail Smith presents Bill Number 1616, Report of the Committee on Public Works for April 24, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 1538, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 827, Authorizing the Director of Public Works to Create a Veteran Banner Program to Waver or Reduce Certain Fees per Section 41602 of the Code, to Hang Banners Approved by the Director of Public Works at Specific Approved Locations in the City by Removing the Approval of the Art Commission and Changing the Authorizing Department from DPW to DOMI. Bill Number 1584, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Execute Relevant Agreements and Contracts to Receive Grant Funding from the Pirates Charity Field for Kids Program to Update Donna Field, AKA Officer Eric Kelly Memorial Field, Located in the 10th Ward of the City, and Further Providing for an Agreement and Expenditures not to Exceed $10,000 for this Stated Purpose. Additionally, the City will Provide Matching Funds in the Form of In-Kind Services Valued at $10,000 Offered by the City of Pittsburgh. Bill Number 1585, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Execute Relevant Agreement and Contracts to Receive Grant Funding from the Pirates Charity Fields for Kids Program to Update Devlin Field Located in the 16th Ward of the City, and Further Providing for an Agreement, Contracts, and Expenditures not to Exceed $10,000 for this Stated Purpose. Additionally, the City will Provide Matching Funds not to Exceed $10,000 in Order to Receive Said Grant Funds to be Used for the Same Purpose. Additionally, the City will Provide Matching Funds in the Form of In-Kind Services Valued at $10,000 Offered by the City.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills under our Public Work Services Committee. Is there further discussion on any of the bills?
I would like to thank the DPW for their work on this, and especially for the fields, because I mean, we hear a lot of stuff with parks and things that are going on, but they have really managed to maintain our parks in an amazing way and keep them public at the same time, so I just really want to thank them for their work.
Great, thanks, Councilwoman. The bills are now ready for...
I just want to briefly echo that because I know that Councilwoman Smith and I both hara, I have been harassing DPW now for several years for investments in the District Seven Fields, and I appreciate that Councilwoman Smith also has a great number of Little Leagues, especially in our fields get a lot of use, so I appreciate it.
And we have a Little League president on our council.
Yeah, I would like to echo Councilwoman Gross's echoing, but yes, my fields, public works, you know, they have been on it, and whether it's cutting the grass, repairing the bleachers, and yes, I am the newly minted Bee Tree Athletic Association President, and we expect to be playing a team or two down at PNC Park later this year, so we'll see how that goes. Thanks.
And you can come when I present the proclamation to our team that wins it. And I also want to thank, if you don't mind, Council President, I'd like to also congratulate and thank Councilwoman Gross on her legislation with the veteran banners as well. Thank you for your work.
Okay, great, thank you very much. The bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mrs. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President?
Aye.
Aye, six, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills, having received the legally required number of votes, then are finally passed. Next, we have our Committee on Land Use and Economic Development. Our Chair is Councilwoman Deborah Gross.
President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1617, Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for April 24, 2019, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 1493, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title for Public Places and Properties, Article One. Public Right-of-Way Encroachments Permit Required. Public Right-of-Way Encroachments to Allow One-Step Program Ramps to Be Installed Without Council Approval.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills under our Committee on Land Use and Economic Development. Is there further discussion on the bill? Then seeing none, the bills now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mrs. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President?
Aye.
Aye, six, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bill, having received the legally required number of votes, is finally passed. Next, we have Councilwoman Strasburger, our Chair of our Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management. May I have Councilwoman Kail Smith again for Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number 1618, Report of the Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management for April 24, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 1586, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 233, which amended Resolution Number 149, authorizing the City to Enter into an Agreement with EDOC Technologies for Licensing Services and Maintenance and Support Services to amend language in previous amended as new projects, which increase the not-to-exceed amount of $79,760 or adding to existing scope of work and not adding services or signatories to the contract.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Heard the reading and the title of this bill under our Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management. Is there further discussion on the bill? Then seeing none, the bills now ready for final action. And all in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mrs. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President?
Aye.
Aye, six, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bill, then, having received the legally required number of votes, is finally passed. Our final committee of the morning is our Committee on Hearings. I am the Chair, Madam Clerk.
Council President Kraus presents Bill Number 1619, Report of the Committee on Hearings for April 24, 2019, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 1517, Resolution Approving the Appointments of Five Members of the East Liberty Triad Revitalization Authority Board of Directors, Council District Seven, Eight, and Nine.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of this bill under our Committee on Hearings. Is there further discussion on the bill? And seeing none, the bills now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mrs. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President?
Aye.
Aye, six, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bill, then, having received the legally required number of votes, is finally passed. Before I go into motions and resolutions, Councilman O'Connor wishes to clarify, he voted aye on the appointment interview of James Hill, bringing the total to five. That now takes us into motions and resolutions. I do have two brief meeting announcements this afternoon at 2:00 p.m., Councilwoman...
Sorry, we didn't vote on the appointment.
No, we voted to interview, and Councilman O'Connor was the fifth vote.
Okay, just clarify, because you just, I just, it's a point of order.
So we're interviewing, correct?
It sounded like you said the appointment, but you said interview.
And please come to the interview.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be there.
I hope.
I won't be.
It's any day.
Okay, so I do have two brief meeting announcements this afternoon at 2:00 p.m. Councilwoman Gross will chair a cablecast post-agenda discussion on childcare programs, and then tomorrow morning, Wednesday, May 1, at 9:30, council will hold a pre-agenda interview for the Shade Tree Commission and the Historic Review Commission, and the standing committee meeting will follow. Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you so much. President Kraus, I have a question I think that the clerk could help us with. So it's my understanding that the citizen commissions, like the zoning board of appeal and the planning commission and the historic review commission are non-employee appointments. They are, you know, they're appointments that the mayor makes to, that are employees, and that there are citizen commissions who are not to be staffed by city employees, or not to be populated by city employees. So that's why I'm confused about the recommendation of the nomination of James Hill, who is, is he, I believe he's still an employee of the mayor, right? So he's a mayor, mayor or employee appointee, right? So the mayor gets to appoint a hundred people that are his personal employees. And then there are these other commissions that I understand to be citizen commissions. So if you could clarify to me those rules around those appointments, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, and why don't we do that before we schedule any interview?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything further? Anything further from members? Councilwoman Kail Smith?
I just want to, you know, mention that the, we were invited to a memorial service for the Workers Memorial Day Ceremony, and they also honor the Tree of Life synagogue victims, and I just want to apologize for not being able to make that. I try to make that every year, and we received a text message from Darren Kelly. I was unable to attend because although I had anticipated on attending, I needed to do something with my family that day and had to watch my granddaughter, new granddaughter, and so I was unable to make it to that event, but I did send Gino in my office to that. But I'm sorry that I personally did not, did not make it, but I want to thank them for their work and for making sure that we remember the work that they do every year and to acknowledge them, and I think that all of council would have been here, you know, had, would have had the opportunity to be there. And I think some council members mentioned that they, they were unaware of it, so I apologize that we failed to get the word out about that, but I want to thank Gino in my office for attending on my behalf.
Thank you. Councilwoman Harris?
Yes, I'd just like to say that I attend every year, and this year, my understanding is that only Mr. Kraus was told.
Yeah, that's my...
Well, there's members here that were not told.
So can I just clarify this quickly?
So I would like to make sure that Darren Kelly or anyone else inform each council member, because we're not all told when something's going on, when they asked Mr. Kraus to put it forward.
No one asked me to put it forward, Councilwoman, please don't...
So I would ask anyone out there, if, excuse me, I'm not finished.
Please don't put words in my mouth.
I am not finished speaking. If you don't mind, please don't interrupt.